Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Ken.
Thanks, Ann. So, thanks all for coming to this joint meeting of the New London Planning Board and the Housing Commission. It's good to see everybody's faces. Thanks to Adam for bringing coffee. Thanks to Emily.
Emily.
Emily, yeah, that's what I thought. Emily for bringing treats. So, please help yourselves during the meeting. We'll start talking with Peter. We both agreed we want to keep this pretty informal and hear from folks and, you know, just have a good discussion. So, a couple of things. We're going to record this, so we have a couple of people on the planning board who can't be here and at least say publicly that they'd like to watch this later, so they'll be able to do that. And then, we also have it for the public record. And what else? Oh, and then we're going to try to wrap up by nine, just for scheduling purposes. I have to get to work. I know other people have things to do, so we'll try to keep it moving. Hence the coffee. So, why don't we jump in? I think you all have docs. If you don't, thanks, Peter, for providing all that, the red lines. Does it make sense, in your mind, Peter, to just kind of walk through what you all came up with and we can sort of maybe interject with questions as we go? Is that all right? Okay, let's do it.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm referring to the two-page document that says, "New London Housing Commission ADU zoning amendments that we've been considering, reflecting on, studying." It's a two-pager. And then Adam quite adeptly put in these concepts into a red line document, which, of course, is just draft, but it's a way to bring everything down to the ground level as to where it would happen. So, thank you for that, Adam, and all the help you've done in putting this together. Adam's been to many, all of our meetings, I think, and has been a great help. So, we're going to step through this zoning amendment document, which reflects the elements that we, as a commission, have studied and would like to recommend for your consideration. Remembering that, in fact, we are really an advisory board. Our job is to focus on housing and be as knowledgeable as we can and to deliberate and give you the best of our considerations. It always helps me in the beginning, whenever I sit down with our housing commission and we reflect on this stuff, to think about the two goals of what we're trying to accomplish. One is to increase moderate housing units in New London, and the second is to achieve voter approval in March, because we can come up with brilliant ideas, but if they don't fly, we're just waving our hands in the wind. So, the first one was to increase the existing ADU maximum size limit of 1,000 square feet. And the question comes up as to, well, where should it be? 1,000 is safe, but when you think about it, it's actually quite small. And in studying what other towns are doing, some are going up to as high as 1,400, we felt that 1,250 square feet was the right number. So, if you'll indulge me for a minute, square feet is a currency that I'm used to in my past career, and for many of you, certainly architects, that's your currency too. But for a moment, if you reflect on what is 1,250 square feet for a family of three or maybe four, which is what the workforce housing is to be designed for, if you picture that you're standing in the parking lot at Park and Ride with a tray of parking spaces in front of you, none of which are occupied by vehicles, the parking space is about nine feet wide, so if you put two of them together, and they're about 20 feet long, so put two together and think of that space in front of you, and then walk to the middle of that space, that rectangle, which would be 20 by 20, or actually a square, and then put another half of that in front of you, that would be the footprint of a two-story accessory dwelling unit that's detached. And if you, so if you take that square footage and add that to a second floor, and then bump out 50 square feet for a stairwell that's pretty steep on both floors, that's 1,250 square feet. And in that, in that space, if you think of it, the ground floor, you would need to have a little bit of foyer for muddy boots and a jacket or two, school books, et cetera. You'd need a family room, you'd need a kitchen, you'd need a bedroom on that floor, and then you go upstairs and you'd have two or maybe three bedrooms up there. So, it's tight. It's very tight. So, without going any further, and I would encourage all of our commissioners to step up and speak to any of these points. If I've missed something or you'd like to augment, please, because we've all been really hands-on. So, that's the discussion, is we're recommending 1,250 square feet for attached and, of course, detached ADUs as well.
Thanks, Peter. That's great. And I was fortunate to be at several of those meetings and thought the discussion was really thorough and engaging, so it was a lot of fun to watch. Comments or questions from the board? And we'll have to share mics. I realize not everybody has one, but just, if you don't have one, just holler. Okay, should we? If there's no comments, let's just move on, then, if that works.
The next item, number two, is increase existing limit on the number of bedrooms, which is now set at two bedrooms, and I think it's important to go to three. I'm reminded, as I was this morning, a little bit bleary-eyed, but I checked again. The New Hampshire Housing Finance and the statute refer to workforce housing as being three-bedroom rentals. So, we're not really meeting that target market if we don't allow three bedrooms. So, it was our consideration that we would allow up to three bedrooms at the unit size cap of 1,250, meaning still within 1,250.
Yeah, great. Any comments, questions? Okay, I'll trust people to just wave if you have them. I don't want to have to ask each time, but just let us know. Thanks, Peter.
I just had, I had one on.
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah, can we do, Jeremy, then Paul?
Yeah. I just wanted to say that one of my notes was, is that, you know, you hit adding 250 square feet to our current 1,000 first, and then you hit the bedroom. If it had gone the other way, not that it matters much, but, you know, increasing it by one bedroom, a typical bedroom, 200 square feet, 180 square feet, so, you know, adding that 250 square feet to the existing 1,000 makes sense, because you're not making the ADU bigger for no reason. You're making it bigger because you're increasing it by a bedroom count. So, those two really seem to tie in with one another, you know, really, really well. So, just a point.
Thank you. Good point. Good way to put it.
I don't know that it matters that much, other than maybe when we're writing the description for the warrant, I mean, for the, is that right? Warren article? For the Warren article. Any more coffee?
Yeah, that's a good point. Thanks. Paul, can you just use the mic?
Hey, Paul, can, sorry. Thanks. It seems to me that one of the challenges that we have as a group is to figure out how this is going to fly. And so, I would just put a marker here, because this issue is a big issue. It was a big issue for us when we did the, when we got this thing done in the first place, and the amount of the size of this is a tough sell. So, that's enough for now, but it's an important question.
I agree with Paul on this. I don't need to get too dramatic about it, but the scars are still on my, you know, skin. Is it possible? Have you considered, what was, if you did, what was the discussion about having different sizes for attached versus detached?
That wasn't discussed. We were trying to keep it simple and anticipating that whether, whatever location it was in, the size was really responsive to the need for housing and the size of, the number of people in the space. So, we did not consider splitting that.
Would you? Why? Why? One of the reasons initially we went with detached only was because the concern that we had heard in the various hearings, meetings that we had, was that people were really concerned about New Hampshire kind of looking like mushrooms had grown up all over when it came to detached housing. And so, excuse me, when it came, yes, when it came to detached housing. And so, I'm wondering, to Paul's point, if that still is an underlying condition, and if so, could it be mitigated by the idea that the detached would be smaller than the attached? It wouldn't look quite so, it wouldn't appear quite so negative, shall I say, to the, to New Londoners.
Yeah, that's, go for it.
Being part of that group that's scarred, they've healed. They're tougher now. I wonder if we maybe just table the attached-detached-size stuff to the end. Other than that, we're going to kind of jump on every one of these items. Just in general, I went through this last night and again this morning. I think it's great. And conversely, I think we might actually just still be overreacting from the opposition we originally received, you know, just confirming with Adam, there's 14 that occurred in seven years, so it's two per year. These aren't mushrooms. We're not overbuilding New London. I get that we need to be able to get this to pass, but, you know, we don't see the crowds in front of us. These are posted meetings. You know, it seems the environment is different, but just kind of my.
I agree. And my point bringing this up is just to put the issue on the table and be sure that everybody understands that this is an issue.
Yeah, I agree. And this came up a little bit during the Housing Commission meeting, that, you know, we had, I raised the point that you all, particularly you three, had borne the brunt of the discussion before, but it does feel like, based on our surveys from the master plan and from other events we've had, that the narrative around housing has really shifted. And I think the Housing Commission knows that better than anybody.
It was created.
And it was created, exactly, and as a result of that. But even just anecdotally, you know, running into people at Hanford, whatever, I think that there's real demand for, and a real understanding of the housing crunch. I don't take anything away from what you all said. I think it's thoughtful and smart to just think, how is this going to play? But I do feel like we have the wind at our backs with this, which is encouraging.
Ken, I'm just going to make a comment. One of the things that happens when you add another dwelling, if you're not on the sewer, is you have to meet the septic system requirements, and for some of these, if someone were to put a detached on a non-sewered lot, three bedrooms is a larger system. The tank is the same size, but the actual field is larger, so that's going to be a controlling factor in some of these non-sewered buildings. And having said that, there's so many people that are thinking about adding to their garage upper-level ADU. They would have to put in a separate septic system, because it is a dwelling. That's a state requirement.
Yeah, go ahead, David.
Another perspective, you mentioned in consideration, in number one and two, that other towns. Are these other towns you're talking about in the Kearsarge Regional School District? Because I think it's important for New London to do this, but it's also important for all our other towns in Kearsarge Regional School District to also have these laws, so it's just not New London in this area that's dealing with housing.
So, David, I know at the very least that Wilmot and Newbury are both working on, and they're a part of the program that Renee is heading from the Planning Commission to work on alternatives to housing and how they can bolster their housing offerings. As far as all of the other towns in the district, I'm just not as familiar with their, some of them are outside of the Regional Planning Commission's district, so they're probably not as aware of those. They don't have the same staff that we do, that I just don't stay in communication. But at least, at least our two neighbors are actively working on it.
Thanks, Jeremy. You had a point.
Yeah, just adding to Ann's comment, septic, you know, on non-municipality served properties is going to be a limiting factor. And I jotted that down on a couple of your other points that you came up with on non-conforming lots and density on smaller lots. So, I think septic there is also going to be a controlling factor, because if those lots are already overbuilt or non-conforming, they're in all likelihood also not going to be able to support the increase. So, it'll be self-regulating, which I think you commented on in a third point somewhere, too.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Other comments from folks on that? Or do you want to move on, Peter?
Sure. Number three, which is, is it prudent to allow multiple ADUs on one property? Lot of discussion and deliberation, and it came to, these are just particular points to mention, but there were a lot of points of view. One of them is, we came up with a recommendation of proposing a maximum of one attached and one detached ADU. And the consideration, one consideration for that is that a internal ADU, an attached ADU really, is essentially part of the single-family residence, is part of the primary residence, and doesn't necessarily make that structure any bigger hypothetically. And it's only the detached ADU that would add more footprint and more development or density of the site. And so, given the need for housing, this type of housing in New London, we felt it was prudent to have a maximum of two ADUs, one of which may be attached and the other one detached. Assuming, by the way, that the detached ADU has to comply with all the dimensional requirements.
Yeah, good point. Questions or comments from anyone?
I thought it was a great idea.
Yeah, it felt like a smart compromise to me as well, to not have the, you know, to sort of, just allow development without letting it be unchecked. Any other comments, questions? All right, let's move on.
Our commission's pretty quiet, because we've hashed this over pretty carefully.
Exactly.
They are alert.
Yes.
I'm not. They are. Number four is to limit detached ADUs in the Shoreland Overlay District, which is 250 feet, Adam reminds me. And this is something I think we've discussed before with the planning board, so I won't elaborate it, but some of the considerations are that if Shoreland detached ADU rental rates probably wouldn't necessarily be considered moderate because of the amenity of being close to the water. And it's not likely, or as likely, that they would be available for the open-market rental, that they'd be more for short-term or for family members or whatever. So, those are the considerations.
One point to just make there is that we do have a lot of lots on the water that are deeper than 250 feet, and so if somebody was able to design a detached unit on their property that was outside of the Shoreland buffer, so between 250 and, say, 350 feet of their lot, they could potentially do that. So, it doesn't necessarily mean that all waterfront homes would not be able to be supported by a detached accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, so I'm going to make some waves here. We already allow an attached accessory dwelling unit in the Shoreland Overlay, and given the prior suggestion of allowing two, what if it's changed to allow an either-or in Shoreland? Because there really is essentially no difference, and I'd argue that the difference is actually a betterment if you allow an attached, I'm sorry, if you allow a detached, especially if the existing structure is already there, such as a garage, because now you're not adding more coverage to a lot. And it wouldn't actually be a change to our ordinance, because we already allow somebody to add 1,000 square feet, 1,250 if this changes, to an existing building. If they have a garage sitting there and they want to put an in-law apartment over it for an in-law, that's better than them adding on to an existing building. So, we could take the two things that you've proposed and modify them slightly to allow something in the Shoreland. And even if it is built new and it's detached, sometimes that's, you know, it's a constraint of the lot. If it's a sloping lot, they can't add on to the building that they have. Also, typically, if somebody's going to add on, you know, an ADU, they're not going to put it on the waterfront, which means it's further from the water. So, again, it's another betterment if you allow them, even if it's in the 250, to put it 150 feet from the water, 200 feet from the water. If, you know, let's say it's a, you know, a space over a garage, or even in an independent structure that's new, reused or not. And I think combine that with the limitation of all ADUs not being able to be used for short-term rental, I think there's a lot of opportunities there. And, you know, I might get a unique view at this, but we have a lot of clients where their parents live on their property in a smaller structure, and in some cases are doing so without an oven, because they can basically build that square footage. Actually, they can build larger, as long as it doesn't have a full kitchen. So, you know, the reality of what we're doing is, I understand the recoil of anything in the Shoreland, but what you might actually be doing by making a change like this is allowing somebody to use an existing structure, allowing somebody to build a smaller structure, actually forcing them to build a smaller structure, because it would have to fall under that 1,250 square feet if they wanted to have a full kitchen and, you know, truly be an accessory dwelling unit for their parents or in-laws. And less often, but it's actually happened a few times, is caregivers. So, a lot of the lakefront homes, the people living them are older, and having caregivers in there actually is a moderate-income space. Sometimes, it's actually what they're being paid. They're being given a home to stay and care for somebody. So, those opportunities are there. I know the other side of that is that, you know, all these mushrooms pop up for short-term rental. But I think as, as long as we can prohibit them from being short-term rental, you might actually come out ahead. So.
I have some comment. I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Sort of congruent with what Jeremy was saying about the, you know, short-term rentals, could you talk to me, please, about the consideration, the first consideration, many existing outbuildings could be converted for seasonal convenience? What do you mean by that? Because if we're looking for, you know, to have ADUs essentially as a substitute or an augmentation of workforce housing, seasonal convenience doesn't make too much sense to me. So, could you tell me the thinking behind that, please?
Yeah, that was Peter's trying to express a negative, that seasonal convenience is not a positive element of providing workforce housing. So, if you prohibit ADUs, detached ADUs in a Shoreland District, then you'd not be allowing seasonal convenience, which is family and friends coming to visit. We're trying to create longer-term housing. So, if we don't prohibit it, it's going to happen instead of the kind of housing we need. Is that clear?
As mud. Try again, please.
Seasonal convenience housing doesn't address the need that we have as a community, in our humble opinion.
So, you're saying that if we don't, if we don't permit it.
Can you use the mic?
If we don't prohibit it.
If we don't limit it, it can turn into seasonal housing.
Yes, the creation has a good chance of being seasonal convenience housing as opposed to the kind of housing that we feel is needed.
Why wouldn't it still fall under the purview of ADUs? And therefore meet, you know, need to meet the requirements?
Well, we'll get into the ADU limitation a bit later on, and that's a slippery slope and a delicate issue, but the point is that I was trying to make was if we don't prohibit detached ADUs in the Shoreland District, one perspective is that it would create more seasonal convenience housing, so your kids, grandkids, cousins could come stay while the weather's good and the lake is warm. And that doesn't really help to address the kind of longer-term rental housing that we need. Is that clear? No?
Can you use the mic?
Somebody else help me?
No, no, no. At the end, I'll ask other clarifying questions.
Can you use the mic, Marian?
Let's move on.
It's listed as a negative. So, it's because the number four is a reason why to limit something. It's not listed as a positive. It's listed as a negative. Although, I guess two negatives make a positive.
I'll ask clarifying stuff at the end. Let's continue with the discussion, please.
Other comments or questions on this? Yeah, so I guess, yeah, what is the, to Jeremy's proposed idea? Are there thoughts on that?
I just want to make sure I understood it, because I thought it had some great thought put into it. So, the notion would be you would, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but you would then split the attached ADU and detached ADU prohibition, so that detached ADUs would be allowed in the Overland District, the Shoreland District? Is that?
Right. So, basically, the proposal here is leaving Shoreland out, allowing all properties to have two ADUs, increasing to 1,250. I mean, that's sort of the heart of this, three bedrooms. By our ordinance right now, we're already allowed to have in the Shoreland Overlay an ADU, but it's got to be attached. So, we're already allowing that increase. So, why not allow it as detached, but just prohibit the two ADUs in the overlay? So, basically, we're not really making a change to the Shoreland Overlay as far as how many ADUs, but only adding the fact that it could be a detached, but they can't also have an attached.
So, we'd add an exception.
Correct.
And I think another point to remember on this would be if the, we'll get to this point in a couple, but if we keep the requirement to be the property owner's domicile, only the New London residents who live in the Shoreland would actually be able to build an ADU. So, it wouldn't be all of the currently seasonal residents that would have the ability to build, whether it's attached or detached. So, you're sort of further whittling down the pool of possibility.
That's a good point. Yeah, that's a great point, Adam. So, other thoughts on Jeremy's idea?
I like it. I think it's a good idea. You're not increasing, and you're, there are so many situations, as you see and we all know, where there is a detached building already there that gets converted. So, you're allowing that, but only one on that. Yeah, I like it.
The only component, and this really doesn't necessarily have to do whether it's detached or attached, but I think that we need to think about as far as the owner occupancy portion that I think would come into play probably more if it was detached, is that when these properties turn over, if you have a separate structure built with your accessory dwelling unit and the next buyer is not a permanent resident, you are left with a legally-built and utilized dwelling unit that can no longer have a kitchen if the next owner is not owner occupied.
Doesn't that occur to any detached?
It occurs for any accessory dwelling unit already, but I do think that we'd probably have more interest in detached in the Shorelands. I think we're probably widening that possibility. And I think, one, waterfront homes, I think, tend to turn over at a slightly higher rate. I don't know if that's, Marilyn, do you think, or not turn over, but from a, there's more possibility that they would turn over to a seasonal frama, full-time, whereas most of the houses in the rest of town that have ADUs, it's pretty consistent that it's full-time, full-time, full-time.
I would just quickly add that Peter's been pressing this issue, and I think it's a good idea, is to have a really clear affidavit that goes in the file at the town hall. I was suggesting it be at the registry, and Adam was going to see if that's possible, but the affidavit would be signed by an individual, an owner, that wants to build a detached ADU or attached, whatever the case may be, and that would be in the file, so that an attorney who's looking at the title for a buyer during the review process, the due diligence process, would find this and say, hey, I just want to remind you, as my client, that this is out there and your condition of an ADU exists with the property. So, there is succession of that covenant, but that's a technical issue.
Yeah, it's a really interesting point. So, I'm seeing a couple of people, you know, Marilyn, Ann, it looks like saying, do you think this is a good idea? But, again, don't want to put words in your mouth, but others, other thoughts on this idea of, or anyone's thoughts on this idea?
There was an example from Hanover that I passed out to Adam, and it's available if you're interested in.
I think the definition of a, I think for the town, the definition is, and how do you really quantify that the owner is a permanent, or whatever the word is that we're using, it's their domicile. That's almost impossible to monitor, truly, truly. I mean, they might vote here that they have to show that this is their domicile to vote in New London, but aside from that, there's no way we could tell whether the people live here year-round, or it is their domicile. So, many of these people, so we think your pushback is going to be in the waterfront district for this whole thing. And if we go at it more gently, maybe we'll get this through and we can adjust it two years from now, if we find that that's a real high demand. I agree that the building sometimes already exists where the people want to switch this over. Again, going with no kitchen, it does not require a septic system. Once you make it a dwelling, it Once you make it a dwelling, it requires a septic system. So, the, if the septic system that's on the property supports their five-bedroom large home, and they want to make the barn, over the barn, a dwelling, they have to somehow, in a three-bedroom dwelling, they have to expand the septic system, whether they tie into the existing one or put a whole new one in the ground. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, it's by bedroom count. So, even if, you know, if they have a five-bedroom house, and they put three bedrooms over their garage, whether or not it has a kitchen, it's, they still need an eight-bedroom septic to support it, because it's your total bedroom count.
Adam, can I just add something for your notes? I don't honestly know, in the terms of people knowing that they're ADUs when they're buying properties and that sort of thing, I have no idea if it's in the MLS as a category or something. I have no idea. So, that's something that is a small thing, related entirely to this discussion, but if we could get it in there, then it would be there right away. When people start looking at the property, they would know that it existed. But I have, I've made a note, but I'm telling you to remind me that I made a note.
And from our record-keeping side of things, Cara and Chris have worked to start tracking this on our tax cards. So, there are a lot of ADUs that predated our 2016 regulation that we don't really have good records of. And Cara, are those still sort of caught under the extra kitchen feature, more or less, the old ones?
So, they appear number or, but not necessarily...
Okay.
So, a good portion probably are, but there's a wide range of ones that maybe they have an extra kitchen, but it has nothing to do with an ADU. Or, there's quite a few where it might just be in the general notes. It's hard to say. There's a lot that we miss.
Okay. But at least for properties with legal ADUs from 2016, it's in the special features category on that first page of the tax card. And it gives that they have an ADU, and it gives the approval date that they received their approvals. So, in theory, if there was somebody doing a title search or, you know, something, that they pulled the tax card, and the realtors come in and get the tax cards or get them offline when they do their listing, they should see the field that there is an ADU, and then with the date there, they can easily go back to our meeting materials and our minutes and our notices of decision. So, that should help at the very least.
Yeah, that's good insight. Other thoughts on this? Yeah, I was going to, it sounds like, it sounds like people are in favor generally of Jeremy's idea. Does that seem like a consensus here?
Okay, so I've modified how it was written. It's up on the screen here, but, what's that? It is. So, one attached ADU and one detached ADU per single-family dwelling unit. Within the shoreline overlay district, properties may have one attached ADU or one detached ADU. Does that encompass...
Okay. Yeah, and I think, Anne, your point about where we get pushback is, you know, in the shoreline, and that's certainly what our veterans of this effort before can attest to. So, but I think it's smart to sort of make it more accommodating if we can.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, the pushback was shoreline and the pushback was anywhere where it had municipal services, which is really strange, because that's really where you want the ADUs to show up, but...
And the legislature may take care of that for us.
Great. Yeah, let's go. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you. We're going to number five, which is owner occupancy requirement. I put this on the list because I wanted you to know how thoroughly we discussed it. And we've touched on it a bit just now this morning. But we felt the existing requirement to have an owner occupancy is important. So, we're proposing not to change that, but I put it here so it could be reconsidered by you and understood how much we discussed it.
Yep, thanks, Peter. I think that's one of those, that, you know, between, aside from the shoreline and sort of having the mushroom idea and that being overly developed, people are really worried about, you know, Airbnb and the Sunupi situation, et cetera. So, I think any of these kinds of provisions could maybe quiet some people's concerns. Are there comments or questions on this idea? No one's opposed to continuing this? Okay.
Number six, similarly, excuse me, there is an existing requirement for parking to be one space per bedroom, and, but, we wanted to augment that a little bit by saying, "But no more than two spaces would be required." You could, an owner could build them, could build three spaces or four spaces, but it wouldn't be required. Again, this is a minimum, not a maximum. And if you do agree to go to a three-bedroom ADU design or concept, then you really have to increase the minimum a little bit.
Only one point on parking that I want to make, because it's a question I've gotten several times over the last few years, but there's no ability to regulate whether or not tenants can have boats and recreational vehicles and other things to park on their, they are occupants, it's their residence, that is up to their landlord. So, though we only have an obligation to require there be off-street parking for their vehicles, if they have an agreement with their landlord to park other vehicles, that is allowed.
That's a great point. Thanks, Adam.
I thought also that might be another sort of self-regulating thing, is if you do have a three-bedroom and there's parking for two places, I think a lot of the smaller lots, again, you know, would probably restrict that to two spaces, but may end up having the space for three bedrooms. You may not end up with three individual tenants there with three vehicles. So, I thought that was a good balance. It might drive those properties more to being family-oriented as opposed to, you know, three independent renters in a three-bedroom unit.
Right. And if you had a young family with young kids or something like that, they don't need a car, so, yeah. Anytime we can limit how much we require parking, I'm in favor of it. Other comments or questions? Okay, thanks.
Number seven's a difficult one. And this is the notion of including design considerations in the zoning bylaw. And I know that's a slippery slope. And I'm wording this carefully, because the commission felt strongly, that this is an important thing for the planning board to consider, even though it's difficult to go there. And some of the concepts that came up that encouraged the commission to recommend it are given on this sheet, and I'll just read them, because it's not the specific language, but it's areas where design could be easily considered and to the benefit of the community. The first one is detached ADU shall appear subordinate to the existing primary dwelling in terms of size and location. Now, there are pros and cons, and the, just quickly, the con to that is, well, if you already have a barn behind the house, that's bigger than the house in some cases. So, I know there are pros and cons, but, and we're not necessarily promoting any one of these, but these are areas where it may be prudent to consider involving design as a criteria. Another concept would be placement of the detached accessory dwelling will not adversely affect the character of the neighborhood, traffic on roads, safety of pedestrians, and will not create a hazard or nuisance to the abutting property owners. That's from the town of Greenfield, which is, has a lot of this, what I would call soft language in it, but it just gives you a feel for it. Another concept would be the architect of the detached ADU shall be the same, architecture of the detached ADU shall be the same as the principal dwelling unit, so to provide aesthetic continuity. This includes appearance, design, colors, and materials. Of course, that's going way to the other end of the spectrum of design control. So, it's just some areas where it could be considered.
Thanks, Peter. Comments, questions? Yeah, Mary Ann?
Excuse me. We don't have such a consideration currently in any area of town, to my knowledge. Certainly, my knowledge is not encyclopedic, so I could be corrected here. But what is the foundational authority or legal authority that would support this? I think it's, you know, sort of a great idea, but I can picture it as a rabbit hole. So, I'd very much like to hear what would be the foundation for this?
Well, I'll just quickly tell you, not in New Hampshire, because I've only done one industrial project in New Hampshire, my experience is in Massachusetts, but I too have lots of scars as a developer from planning board control over commercial development. And it involves a lot of design and consideration for architecture and reflection of glass and wind impacts, and there's so much that can go into the consideration of the planning board under site plan review and conditional permitting. So, it is done. The question is, is it prudent to do it here?
Well, certainly, as a member of the planning board, I do consider things like, you know, direction of light, reflection, glare, things like that. But it doesn't consider, excuse me, it doesn't consider, I don't think we've got the authority to do that in terms of regulating design. Safety issues, certainly. But I don't, I don't know how we can go out on a limb on this. And it's not to say that I wouldn't be willing to. I'd like to know more about how we could do it and have a foundation to stand on.
Yeah, Marilyn, sorry.
We approached this sort of, you know, because so much of it is really dependent on one person's perspective. And that's why I would, I personally, the third concept is not something I would ever even go near with a 10-foot pole or 20-foot pole. But the one that struck me and may have more municipal control was the one from Greenfield. I said, "This sounds nice. I mean, it sounds like you're thinking about what might affect people. And if it affects traffic, that's a municipal thing. If it affects the safety of pedestrians, that's probably ends up being municipal." So, at least, again, it's always who's going to decide what's good and what's bad. But at least these things sounded like you were looking out for the welfare, the general welfare, and the general impact that this ADU would have on the neighbors, the town, whatever. It's a slippery slope, for sure.
Yes. Marilyn, from what I'm understanding, you're essentially saying if we put these, if we have this thinking behind number seven, the middle one, for you, it makes sense because it is in consideration of the town's people's safety and convenience and well-being in terms of their living space. Is that correct? I agree with you, with the exception of the character of the neighborhood. That one, you know, sets alarm bells off in me. And so, I wouldn't, you wouldn't touch something with a 20-foot pole, I wouldn't care, I wouldn't touch that one either. The other parts, the traffic and safety of pedestrians and stuff, I can totally endorse.
I'll hop in here. So, it's, it is a slippery slope, because it's subjective. We have nothing written. You know, we don't say we have to have all of this zoning, all of this zone have clavards and shutters, and the shutters have to be black. I mean, so, you know, we don't have that type of ordinance. It's really tough, and it's subjective. And then you sit a planning board around that, and each person's view of any one of these is going to be different, because it's their perspective, and again, it's subjective. We have nothing to fall back to in the ordinance. So, you know, the first one, I understand it, but to the point where, you know, what's, what is subordinate? Well, what if there's a 1,500-square-foot house on the site, and they want to build a 1,250-square-foot ADU? You know, not many people are going to know the difference between that 250-square-foot difference. So, subordinate has a challenge. There's a lot of garages and barns that are bigger than the house itself, so that's also not subordinate. So, that one's tough. Skipping to the last one, that's what I just addressed, that's that slippery slope, where, you know, there's, there's no, there's nothing to fall back to on that one. The middle one I agree with, and I absolutely agree with Mary Ann. Character is subjective, and that's tough. And I'd also strike nuisance, because that's a little vague. One person's nuisance is not another's. Hazard, however, can be clearly defined, you know, directing water toward their property or blocks a line of sight for coming out of their driveway. You know, those are all things that can be, you know, they're quantity, quantitative, you know, yeah, yeah, thank you. Nuisance, well, you know, I think, I think somebody could argue that just any building next to their property is a nuisance. So, I think the middle one works really well. It puts something in the ordinance that says, "Hey, we are watching out for everybody, we're watching out for the abutters." But if you strike character and you, you know, maybe find a synonym for nuisance, that's a little bit better. I think that works, and it says, you know, "We get it, and when it's in here for review, the planning board is watching out as to what's being built and its effects on the neighborhood and, of course, the direct abutters." So, that's my two cents.
Yeah, thanks, Jeremy. And I would just...
It's clear that the character of the neighborhood was proposed to be stricken.
Yep.
So, to Jeremy's point, that wouldn't be in there? Is that part of the discussion?
Yeah, that's, it sounds like, right, that wouldn't be in there. And Adam, do you want to read a quick version? Because I'd want to...
So, just deleted a couple of things based on what I've heard. So, it would read now, "Placement of the unit shall not adversely affect the traffic on the road, safety of pedestrians, and will not create a hazard to abutting properties." Let's change that to an or.
I think that the "to abutting property owners" was more modifying the nuisance part, that, so, the hazard is, hazard is a hazard, and it doesn't matter whether you live next door or...
Good point.
Yeah, great point. And I would just, during one of these meetings with the Housing Commission, I did make the point as well, that a lot of, Jeremy, I'm sure can speak to this more than I can, but a lot of the prefab ADUs, detached ADUs that you come across today are contemporary in style, and from my opinion, I think look fantastic. But, so I think that's another thing, too, for if our goal is to try to develop housing, and if somebody decides they don't want to build it, but they just want to bring something in that is already constructed. If we said, from an aesthetic standpoint, that it had to somehow either be in, be parallel to the primary structure or fit a certain aesthetic, then I think that's a challenge. And I have a colonial house, I don't know how you would do like a mini-colonial house that wouldn't look bizarre, right? That, like, if you had to do something, you know, exactly like that, it would be strange. So, and frankly, and then the last point is, I think oftentimes, we do have a lot of older homes that are beautiful in town, but I think sometimes that contrast of, you know, traditional-style home, but then maybe an outbuilding somewhere that's very different and contemporary can be a really cool contrast. So, that's, again, that's my opinion, but it gets into this point about how hard this is, because a lot of people here probably think I'm nuts, so then they wouldn't agree, but it's a very hard thing to put to paper.
So, if the ADU becomes its own driveway, because no place in here do we talk about driveways, sorry about my voice. There's an example of a driveway being a nuisance to the people across the street, because all of a sudden, this new driveway now creates headlights in their house day and night, well, obviously not day, but day, night. And the turning and the lit thing at the end of the driveway, and the people across the street are very upset. That's the nuisance that comes to my mind, is if there's new, new adoptions for these ADUs, because they have enough road furniture, and they don't want them coming in their driveway.
Right. And right now, under the language that's updated, we're proposing hazard. So, I think that the nuisance part, while people may not like it, they would just have, you know, if you don't like it by the property, right? I mean, it's kind of what we sometimes say to folks, like, that in this case, they would have to be an actual hazard, not something that would just maybe annoy someone, that someone went and put in a driveway and property that they rightfully, you know, own and have a right to do.
And in the case of driveways, at least, our driveway regulations would still be in place, so they would still have to, you know, meet sightlines and setbacks and all of those things, so that in a lot of cases, a second driveway entrance probably just isn't feasible to start, so that will help, too.
Correct. Yep. Although...
Although every property is allowed to if they can meet them, but there are so many properties where they can just barely make the setbacks for one curb cut, or the sightlines, rather, for one curb cut, that it really doesn't help that we allow them to have a second one.
Yeah, I think that's what I was trying to get to, is it, it kind of falls in with septic and all the others. They're, to some degree, self-regulating. The two, the two driveway curb cuts would have to be a fairly large property to be able to support that.
I have a problem with the word hazard hanging out there all by itself at the end of the A. I think it needs to be modified in some way. For example, a safety hazard or something. But just to say a hazard, one man's hazard may be another man's sculpture. So, you know, I just think, we've got to be careful about, that's what we're struggling with, the wording and the, and the specificity of it. So just to have that word hazard hanging there doesn't, isn't clear at all, isn't helpful, I don't think. If you modify it in some way, like saying a traffic hazard, which you've already got up there with the safety of pedestrians.
Yes, safety is perfect. Because it covers all of them.
Or safety.
It's pedestrian, it's traffic, it's, you know-
Safety hazard.
Could you say detrimental impact? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, I'm, to be honest with you, I'm struggling to come up with something, but I just think it, I'm not talking about, yeah, and will not create a safety hazard.
Yeah, he just added that word. And that, if we do detrimental impact or something, my concern there is that it starts to get down the road of like, I don't like that they did that versus safety, which is a more, I think, tangible. And I think just the everyday, if you ask someone on the street, they would understand that there's a kind of limit to that part, right? You may not like it, but if it's not actually creating some sort of danger for folks, then it should be allowed.
Why can't we just remove and will not create a safety hazard? Because you've got pretty much the same verbiage above. Adversely affect the traffic on roads or the safety of pedestrians. Why can't we just leave it at that?
So I think there was a discussion about water running off, which would not be a pedestrian or other-
So you could say, and will otherwise not create a safety hazard if you needed to, in terms of, to the idea that you already addressed safety.
Otherwise. Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
Group editing. Thank you.
It's a great point, Paul. Yes, everyone loves group editing. Other comments or questions on this? All right.
Short-term rentals, delicate issue. Adam, in some discussions I've had with him, said, first, we need to create a definition because there isn't one in the town zoning. So I'll leave that discussion up to him because I, we sort of jumped to the fact that there was one. But the notion of setting a minimum limit for the duration of a lease or use of a property, it was discussed at length and it was felt that a 90-day minimum would cover that kind of concern. And one of the references, although it's not certainly the only reference, but 90 days seemed to be a good reference point because, for example, traveling nurses operate generally on 90-day contracts. And that's one of the needs that we have in our community. There are many others, of course, but that was one that was tangible. So we discussed at length, but felt that a, setting a minimum of 90 days for a definition was appropriate. So if somebody had a 60-day rental, that would be considered a short-term rental, just to be clear. If it was for six months, that would not be a short-term rental.
And so the definition that I wrote, I did change one word from what the Housing Commission talked about the other night, and it's an important change. But, so the definition reads that an accessory use of a residential dwelling unit rented for a fee for a period of less than 90 days. And that was specifically to allow if we did have traveling healthcare or other short-term employees that would be on a 90-day, that they could have a 90-day lease, but 89 or less would be considered a short-term rental. So that we're not, God forbid, we end up in another pandemic situation and we need all of these, you know, housing opportunities like we did in 2020 when all of a sudden we had an influx of traveling healthcare professionals. We wouldn't have something that stood in the way of utilizing this mechanism. So that does go away a little bit from what we talked about the other night, where we said 90 days. You know, it sort of takes a day out of it, but-
I don't think I'm speaking out of school when I say that. That was kind of our intent, was to allow 90 days.
And so then where it's actually in the ordinance, it just says ADUs shall not be used as short-term rentals. And so then this definition would be overarching to the entire zoning ordinance to just define anything in any zone, whether it's ADU or not, as an accessory use to residential, which it already is. But this would actually make that official in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, thanks, Adam.
Do we identify what a short-term rental really is?
That was, that's, yeah.
So then the definition would be an accessory use of a residential dwelling unit rented for a fee for a period of less than 90 days.
Okay, all right. Are we still on number eight? Okay, I have another question. And it's kind of an overarching one and maybe a little delayed in raising it. Who's going to be monitoring all this? Who has the authority to intervene if, shall we say, transgressions occur in the use of these ADUs? Because I think a while back, we learned that some people had built ADUs and hadn't come to the town for approvals and stuff. And it didn't seem as though anything was going to happen about it. So where is, again, the overarching authority and mechanism for monitoring this?
So ultimately, the enforcement lies with the Select Board. And then the Select Board have designated the zoning administrator, me, to enforce the zoning ordinance. I'm not familiar with ADUs that have been built since 2016 illegally that we haven't followed up with. An example of one that was built that you'll remember last year on Bog Road, when we found out about those accessory dwelling units, we forced them to not only remove one at the time because we only allowed one, but then we had the, I think, 12 months of public hearings to go along with that to legalize the, the one that they could have. And so that was an enforcement proceeding. So if there are other ones out there that have been installed since 2016 that you're aware of, let me know.
Sure. I thought, yeah, I thought this was super neat and tidy compared to some other places that are contending with short-term rental issues. However, we have nothing else in our zoning that this would apply to yet.
Correct.
But would this be prohibitive in the future? Not that I would necessarily propose changing anything, or we just deal with it then?
So it wouldn't be prohibitive. And in fact, we really need to get a definition of short-term rental into our ordinance because there was a court case last year, I think it was, last, well, this legislative year, but that defined, provided more clarity in that short-term rentals were always seen as just a traditional residential use. And so they, this court case gave more clarity to that is not actually the case, that it is a, though it is used to house people, it is not their domicile as defined by state law. And so having a permissive zoning ordinance, until something is explicitly allowed, it's really not allowed. And so having this, we're saying it's an accessory use to residential. It's allowed because in the residential zones, we allow accessory uses. And so by defining this as an accessory use, it would at least allow for the folks who are renting now, because we do know we have, you know, a fair amount. I don't think we have as many as other communities. But it would allow them to, to sort of be able to point to the spot in the zoning ordinance where it says that they can. If we down the road wanted to deal with restricting that, we could, but this would not do that, other than the accessory dwelling unit.
I might be having a hard time wrapping my head around this. An accessory use of a residential dwelling unit. Won't this actually affect somebody's current residence if they are using it? Ignore ADUs. Yeah, like this, maybe this is confusing. It says, so we're defining a short-term rental as an accessory use of a residential dwelling unit. So if somebody has a house and they are currently using it as a short-term rental, aren't we now prohibiting them from doing that?
No, we're allowing them to do it because the dwelling, or the zoning ordinance allows for in all residential districts, number eight is accessory uses. And so we are saying that a short-term rental is an accessory use, so that it's allowed in the residential districts. Whereas right now, there's nothing that says that it is. And so it's providing clarity. I mean, we obviously allow them in the sense that we have not told anyone they can't. So this is from the Municipal Association, this, that I've got up here now that you really can't see. But it speaks to, so it says, it talks about how New Hampshire communities had widely just considered a short-term rental.
I apologize. I got it. Sorry. I'm going to drink more coffee. It was accessory, because we're talking about accessory dwelling units and then accessory uses that-
Yep, same, same word that gets used in multiple different ways. But, and so just so everyone's aware, this is the document that is, has sort of guided us on this. And the, the answer from the Municipal Association attorney is that it is not a residential use. A room rented for a weekend or a unit is a temporary occupancy residence, not the same as it being your domicile. So hopefully, this would be a way of us clearing up that piece without having to really wade into the wider short-term rental at this point. I do think that the legislature will take this up in the next session, most likely. And so I'm hesitant to dive in too deeply if someone else could do the work for us on a statewide level. So this would at least get it in there.
No need, no need to apologize. It's good. It tripped me up as well initially. So other comments or questions on this? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, please.
I'm looking at the red line, so that the red line addition to add would be that ADUs shall not be used as short-term rentals. So would, that would include detached, attached, and would that include pre-existing legally non-conforming ADUs?
It would include any accessory dwelling unit that was bound to this ordinance or the one from 2016. As far as prior to 2016, whether or not those would actually be considered accessory dwelling units because they were not done under our regulation and whether they would be held to that, I think that's a conversation we would have to have with our attorney.
So potentially, someone could continue to do what they often do, which is not put a full kitchen in, and they wouldn't be bound by the same restrictions.
Correct. That's not an accessory dwelling unit. Yep. Because as a, as a dwelling unit definition, you must have a place to sleep, a kitchen, and a bathroom that includes either a tub or a shower. So if you remove a piece of that equation, then you're not a dwelling unit and you can fly under the radar.
Okay. Going to number nine then. This is touching on non-conformance too. Excuse me. This was discussed at length and how to deal with it, but it's, it's actually a very legal issue and I for one feel a little bit out of my realm. But the bottom line was that we felt that it was important to leave the existing ordinance of non-conformance and because it would essentially be self-regulating. For example, if a property were non-conforming with respect to lot size and the owner wanted to create a detached ADU, you have all the requirements of setbacks and septic fields and, and those kinds of dimensional constraints and practical constraints that we thought it best not to, to deal with the issue of non-conformance by creating exceptions. Did I get that right?
Yeah. Again, I agree with that one. I think anyplace where it's self-regulating, we don't need to complicate things by trying to write something else.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. Other comments, questions? Okay.
This is the notion of creating an affidavit, and it's really procedural, but one that's, that we felt was important. Again, the notion of full disclosure and not a surprise to buyers, whether it be done at the registry or town. There needs to be some very clear tripwire, if you will, where somebody who's interested in buying a property early on discovers it. And Marilyn's idea about the MLS is also a good idea, too.
This might be more of a question for Adam. Is this, is this a cost to the person putting the ADU in? I mean, I know registering isn't probably a huge cost in the grand scheme of building something, but I was just curious.
So I'm not sure that the registry will even take an additional piece like this. And when Peter and I met yesterday afternoon, I said I would catch up with Cara, and we have not caught up yet because she tends, and I don't want to put her on the spot, but she deals with the registry on a regular basis and does all of the recordings for our other documents. So I think it's something we have to look into as far as whether or not it can be registered. You know, we can certainly keep things in town files and I would say, a lot of the realtors come in and look at the property files when they're listing a property. I can't say that they all do. You know, whether or not they're looking at the, the information that we provide on the tax card as associated documents. And so maybe they're getting this information. We could possibly associate ADU documents with the tax card online so that it was more widely available. This is the application that we currently use. And so we have this signature required and they're acknowledging, you know, this paragraph that I, the language is not quite as strong, but it does certify that they have submitted the required information per the provisions of the New London zoning ordinance pertaining to ADUs for review by the planning board. And I think that we could potentially add a line or two here to sort of strengthen this a bit. And that does not need to go through town meeting process. We can handle that administratively through the planning board.
Thanks, both of you. Other comments or questions on this idea? I know we touched on it before. No concerns there? Okay.
Does this show up somewhere in the proposed changes, though?
Does what show up, Jeremy?
The requirement for registering. Or is this just a note?
I would-
As a consideration?
I would just quickly add, I don't think of it as a registration. I think of it as being a covenant for creating housing. It, I guess in a sense, it acts as a registration. But I, as far as being clear as to what our intent was, we're not trying to behave like sonnetby and get every, I'll stop there.
Yes. No, I just, I, so I'm reading and it, and it says, sorry, checklist and signed affidavit. So this is just procedural, as Adam said. It's not showing up anywhere in the ADU draft document because I didn't, okay, so I didn't just miss it. Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, good clarification. So should we talk future considerations?
Sure. This is just a placeholder. Again, more to the point of gaining community approval of something that's- Again, more to the point of gaining community approval of something that's clearly described to them and the impacts and effects are, are made clear as well, which is an education process we all have to address. But the notion is that we're, we're in a world where we're trying to encourage the expansion of housing in the middle range. And one of the real impediments is the administrative process is seeking approvals and the, the filing of an application and the waiting of the, of the period for notice and then going to the meeting. And there are a number of towns, and I'm not saying we necessarily want to be like them, but it's important to note, Enfield is one where their ADU bylaw is about maybe a third of a page, and it's as a right to create an ADU. We don't necessarily want to go there, but we should in the future, I think, as our commission is recommending, to consider at some point, is there an alternative process to the conditional use permit under the planning board that is a little bit simpler? And whether that would be done with the, the internal ADU and not the detached, which has some design issues and, but, but keep in mind that we're trying to facilitate housing. And it's important from a standpoint in the beginning to make sure the controls of regulating it is in the planning board, but maybe there's a way to do it later on in a lighter way, but still have the same protections. There is a method that's being discussed in different municipalities called a technical review committee, which is, maybe you've heard of it. It's basically a staff of the town with some planning representation, presumably the planner of the town, and it's going through a checklist of dimensions and doorways and whatever, whatever the, the standards are, that is lighter than the full conditional use permit process. And in fact, in some municipalities, it's called a mini site plan. They use that term instead of technical review committee. So for future consideration only, but, but keep in mind that one of our goals is to create housing and we still have this regulatory hurdle impediment of full planning board review. I think I got that right.
And just to sort of give everyone a little bit more background on conditional use permits. So been doing some research about, you know, how can a conditional use permit be approved? And there is the ability in the law to designate an administrator of a conditional use permit. So in theory, that could be a technical review committee's approval that would approve a conditional use permit. However, if that is the chosen path and the right is not vested with the planning board, then that committee has to take those applications to the planning board and get their non-binding comments and then have those comments need to be submitted in writing to the administrator. So we really don't save anything and essentially I would be writing myself a memo and having Tim sign it after the planning board meeting. We could. And truly, I think it would probably create more of a hassle for the property owner because they're gonna want to attend the planning board meeting and then they're also going to want to attend the, the technical review committee meeting. So I think right now that's probably not the path forward like we had initially hoped. And Peter and I talked a lot yesterday about maintaining consistency between the process for attached and detached. We had talked about this sort of hybrid scenario where people seem more comfortable with attached. They're not showing up to the planning board meetings. Butters are not like they were in the beginning. But I think we, we invite a lot of opportunity for confusion if we create two separate processes, one for attached and one for detached. Tim gets noticed for his neighbors detached and Jeremy doesn't for his neighbors attached and they're talking about it and he says, hey, they didn't do this right. I didn't get my notice. And then we get calls and we get complaints. So I think from, from a public perception standpoint, it's easier to just know this is the process for accessory dwelling units. And I think we were, you know, five, six years removed in the attached process. We were probably ready to roll that back a little bit more. And I think in four or five years now, having included detached, we may be ready to roll that back on the, the whole. We may not be, you know, we'll see how it goes. But I think at this point in time, it's more important to relax some of the other standards and provide more flexibility than to sort of streamline the overall bureaucratic process, which I'd like to think is not too onerous to start with. So that's my, my theory and why it's sort of changed from what you may have heard me, you know, say earlier this fall.
I don't think we should make Adam do more work.
Amen. Are there other comments, questions on this?
Yeah, go for it.
That, that's it?
Yep. I guess now that we've talked about that, we should just decide what our next steps would be. Like you mentioned at the top, we have, you know, the tentative hold for another meeting if we need it. Seems like we may not, but do we want to just run through real quick, Adam, like a quick highlight of the proposed changes? And then we might be able to pull this off.
Maybe if I didn't... Okay. He wants to cause problems before we go through or as we go through? Okay, all right. So the, the first change there is just the addition of the definition of short-term rental, which will appear in the beginning of the zoning ordinance with the rest of the definitions. And then the next is the actual definition of ADU, which appears right in the body of the text in the zoning ordinance pertaining to ADUs, where we modify it from just an attached to a single-family to or detached from a single-family dwelling to allow for that, that flexibility there. And then when we go down to the actual standards, we are allowing one attached ADU and one detached ADU. And then within the Shoreland Overlay District, properties may have one attached or one detached And then the accessory dwelling units shall not be used as short-term rentals. They shall be no more than three bedrooms, no more than 1,250 square feet of finished interior living space. Keeping the one parking space per bedroom, however, capping that at no more than two parking spaces of the ADU shall be required. Yes, Jeremy?
It's, so it isn't one of the proposed changes, but I, I have a question on right about where you're gonna get to be for attached accessory dwelling units. The old language is shall have entrances, exits facing the side or rear property lines. We did not add that to the, to, to detached accessory dwelling units. I'm not suggesting we do. I'm actually suggesting we take it away from attached. There's been a few proposals before the board where by forcing whatever the attached unit is to have an entrance pointing to one of the two side lot lines, we basically end up with a blank wall facing the road. And, you know, I know, I have a hard time looking at it. It's not something that, yeah, you know, it's, it's an aesthetic thing, but it's actually driven by our ordinance where it would have been nicer in the layout of the plan to have a door with, you know, a little entrance canopy or, you know, even a door as opposed to a big blank wall facing the road. So I actually consider A in 10, 11, 12, 12, 12A to be a hindrance that should actually be struck from accessory, attached accessory dwelling units and not added to detached. And then the two of them would be the same.
Yep. And, and I'm glad that you picked up on that because Peter and I also talked about this yesterday, bringing that up, because it has been a perennial issue for folks. And when you look at the sort of traditional New England vernacular of our houses, single-family homes have sometimes five or six doors because they've been added on to countless times. So I think that though the intention was probably to keep it looking like a single-family home, this really won't change that. So if everyone's on board with that, we will strike it. Thank you for catching that, Jeremy. And then the last section there to add is pertaining specifically to detached accessory dwelling units, and it's the placement of the unit shall not adversely affect the traffic on roads or safety of pedestrians and will not otherwise create a safety hazard. And then duplication of, of the standard from attached, where it shall not be considered an additional dwelling unit for the purposes of determining minimum lot size or density. And so we will, we'll let it fall to what the property can support. Does that cover everyone's?
Can you use the microphone, Paul?
I'd just like to go back to the, right at the very beginning. I'm stuck at the beginning. I'm stuck at the 1250. I, I'm concerned, I, I'm all in favor of this. I was in favor of it back in whenever it was that we were doing this in the first place. But I'm concerned about selling this to the town. And I'm concerned about putting out things that would, where the baby gets thrown out with the proverbial bathwater. And, and that, that 1,250 issue is just, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if that's too much to do all at once, that we should leave the actual total to 1,000 square feet. I know that limits what you can do with what these are, but I'm just, I'm just concerned about, about how this is gonna fly. I want it to fly, but I don't want us to unwittingly do something in our enthusiasm and, and, you know, our understanding of this and, and, you know, the baby gets thrown out with the bathwater, so.
And I think it's important to remember, Paul, that this isn't the last opportunity to change this. We will talk about it on the 12th and we'll put it on the, the agenda for the planning board. And then we potentially have two more public hearings. And so if we were to see, you know, a large amount of opposition come out to the public hearing that says, you know, we really think 1,000 square feet is better, we have the opportunity on January 9th to say, okay, we hear you. We want to keep it at 1,000 square feet. We, that's a substantive change. We would hold a second public hearing. But part of me says, let's test the waters, you know, and see what kind of response it gets. And this is our sort of opportunity to experiment a little bit with that.
I have another comment on that. Paul, how are you reading this 250? Because I'm wondering if your objection could be modified or mitigated by saying, you know, something as small as a unit of no more than 1,250. Does that help soften it for you?
Yes. Yes, it could. I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking about selling this and, and I want it to go forward. And I'm, I'm thinking that that could be, that's the first thing that people are gonna see. They're increasing the size of these things. And off we go. So I, I'm just, that's, it's a, it's a sales issue in a way. Yeah.
I, I do think we also...
And I, I agree with, I agree with what, what you're saying, Adam. I mean, I, I think we'll go through the process and we may, in fact, nobody may object to this. Good, if that's the case. But I, I don't want us to, you know, shoot ourselves in the foot.
One other thing. If we are going to leave this in place and solicit comments from, you know, the townspeople residents, where are they going to see the changes? Might help us to embrace this notion.
So after this red line is considered sort of approved, not approved, but you're all okay with how this is, we will get it on the website the first part of next week with the other zoning amendment redlines. And so it'll be available there for folks to see. The meeting on the 12th is not a public hearing, although I think we've always taken public comment at that point. But there's not a notice in the paper for the meeting on December 12th that pertains to this. However, it does appear on the agenda. And then the hearing on January 9th is a public hearing and that notice will be in the Intertown Record. And typically the selectmen mention it at their meetings and people will presumably, this, we're recording today, so this video will be on the website. I know we had a few members who were traveling and they were very interested in making sure they could see the recording. That will be available to, to the wider public.
When does the municipal matters come out? Should be coming out pretty, pretty soon. Is there a mention, a possible mention in municipal matters? I think that could be beneficial.
We certainly can. The municipal matters doesn't publish on a specific schedule. It's sort of, you know, as Kim has time and the need to advertise, but I'll, I'll catch up with her and see what she's looking at.
I, all of the Housing Commission's meetings are published meetings, the agenda. There hasn't been large groups of people showing up against this. Nobody's here against this at this meeting or the last meeting. So I think the environment has changed a lot since the first time we did this. I also think if in the writing of the narrative, whatever that thing is called for the Warren article, it's reversed, that it's, you know, changing it from two-bedroom to three-bedroom and in doing so, increasing from 1,000 to 250 to allow the use of, you know, young families, et cetera, et cetera, then the explanation occurs before you're seeing the increase in size. So I think that that is, you know, how that, that language is crafted is really important. So that's just, I think the environment's different and I think the, the reason for the increase in size is, is not just an increase in size. It's because, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to address something for, for small, smaller families, so.
I'd also suggest we get it on the agenda for January on the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Yeah, that's, that's a smart idea.
Which would be January 6th.
Yep.
Okay. Well, seeing as, yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Just one quick point, because we, we deliberated on this carefully. One thought is that with the younger generation and remote working, that this extra quote bedroom, at least in the case of our adult children, probably would be used as an office. And I never would imagine that, that you'd call the house that one of our children bought was, was a five-bedroom house. It's small, but two of those bedrooms are being used for offices, each for the, the adults. So it is a, it is a dual-income workforce that we're dealing with and they have children sometimes. And so that, those quote bedrooms get used for other purposes. Just part of the sales pitch.
No other comments on that. I just want to acknowledge the, the work that the Housing Commission has put into this. And, you know, they've met probably six to seven times since July specifically on this for a couple hours each time. It's hard for me to fathom the planning board having had an extra 16 to 20 hours to invest in meeting time into this. And I don't think we could ever have accomplished something like this with the, the schedule that, of applications that we've had. So as New Englanders, I think you should be really proud that we have this system in place to champion some of these, these tasks. And then as planning board, we should be really grateful to the Housing Commission for taking on these very tedious tasks and sort of spoon-feeding it and delivering it to us. This is the second year in a row now that this system has worked really well. We saw a lot of support last year and I'm confident that we will this year, too. So thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. I was gonna say the same, Adam, that we really appreciate all the hard work the Housing Commission has put into this and it makes it a really fruitful discussion today, but many, many hours went into this. And like I said, it was a real sight to watch the, the many meetings I was able to attend of the Housing Commission and it was a great discussion. So appreciate that.
So clarity on next steps?
So yeah, next steps, do you want to?
Sure. So unless I hear an objection to it, I think the next meeting would be at our regular meeting on the 12th. I'm blanking. I don't think we have any application. I think we have a tree cutting on the 12th. And then we will go through the other zoning amendments that you all have seen and this. And so we will, should have ample time to be able to handle this all then. And then from there, the planning board does not meet a second time in December because of the holidays. The next step, assuming all of those amendments get moved forward to public hearing, would be January 9th. And then if we needed a second public hearing to make any modifications, that second public hearing would be January 23rd. This, the, now that they've chosen that as primary day, that does present some interesting issues for us. However, we have secured the, the school so that the planning board can still meet with budget committee meetings and everything else. It's really hard for us to diverge from our schedule. But so that would be the sort of full zoning amendment season calendar. Whatever goes on the 23rd, 9th or 23rd, if we need a second, would then move forward to the town meeting warrant.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks, Adam. Again, thanks everybody for the hard work and appreciate you coming this morning. And thanks for those who brought treats for us. Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.